Well, Lindberg School's Board of Education Workshop 1578 is called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Andrew?
Second.
Second by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, we will move on to our discussion topics, 4.01, Student Growth and Achievement Report. Dr. Sparks?
All right, so we are excited to share our student learning data from the 2223 school year. As a reminder, in April at our board workshop, we do the learning report, which is really focused on the student experiences around learning, and then at the conclusion of the school year, when we have the full data set from fall, winter, and spring, we consolidate that to share it with you here today. So what we have with us, Drs. Jill Lawson, our Executive Director of Assessment and Student Services, who has done the bulk of the organization of this data, Dr. Craig Hamby, Executive Director of Elementary Education, and Dr. Ronnie Zagora, Executive Director of Secondary Education, who will be sharing the data from the school year. The way that we have this organized tonight is that it is in specific data sets. So you'll see FastBridge, our K-3 assessment data first, followed by our iReady math data, K-3, before we move into our NWEA map growth data from grades four through nine, and then lastly, the college and career data for the high school. So we'll go through the slide, the data slides specifically first. Jill will lead that, and then Ronnie and Craig will provide the context at the conclusion of each of those data sets. So that's when it works to have the Q and A about what we're noticing within the data. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lawson.
Okay, thank you so much. So I will go ahead and get us started, and if you can go to the next, well, this slide right here, thank you. Just wanted to kind of give a graphic of the why we give these particular assessments and what it means to have a balanced assessment system. So if you look at the top left and then top right, you'll see there's the accountability and the inform and respond to learning. So when we're giving assessments and we're collecting evidence, we're always looking at those two particular things. The accountability piece is how are we doing as a district, as a building, within our class to help our students and make sure that we are getting them to where they are supposed to be, finding out where they are, and helping them make those gains towards the end of the year to get where they want to be? And then also, looking at our assessments to be about collecting evidence on what our next steps are when we're helping individual students. So we're using the assessment data to inform and respond to where students are individually and help them make those personalized gains. So to have a strong assessment, a balanced assessment plan, we're really looking at these big three types of assessments that happen within our district. So we have our state assessments, which are the grade level assessments, our in a course assessments at the high school, and then also for our students who are English language learners, looking at the access assessment. And so that data will come out here soon. But right now, tonight, we're going to focus on district assessments, which we have FastBridge, iReady, NWEA, and that's the conclusion. We'll talk about ACT, AP. And, but I never want to forget the importance of the classroom assessments that our teachers generate that provide the most immediate feedback and opportunities to respond to learning, and those are our teacher assessments. So all of this is part of our way of collecting evidence of how our students are learning. So moving on to the next slide, this is pretty much just reiterating what Dr. Sparks said about what we, how, the assessment tools that we use, K through 12. So we have FastBridge, K through 3, NWEA is truly 4 through the high school, and we'll be adding some additional assessments, which I'll talk about at the very end of the presentation. Next slide. Okay, so I, there are going to be slides where I'm going to move really quick, and then there's going to be slides where I'm going to dive a little deeper. And so for this, for the early reading, it is an assessment that I am going to dive a little bit deeper on. Within the structure of each of these slides, you're going to see a bigger slide that is covering the performance levels within the year. And then to the right, you will see a longitudinal chart of how this particular grade has done over time, but not with the same students. And then when there is an opportunity to provide cohort data, I will also have that available as well. So digging into kindergarten and early reading, when we're looking at students from the fall to the spring, it can be a little bit misleading when you're looking at kindergarten and early reading. And one of those particular reasons is because the subtests that are given to students in the fall are not the same subtests that are given to students in the spring. So it's not a, it's not a pre and a post test, looking at that growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. But what you will, but what we do still need to notice is that we want our students to develop those skills so that they're still showing that performance level that we hope to get them at at the end of the year. But just to give you an example, on the second week, between the second and the third week of school and kindergarten students come into the classroom, they're giving some very simple, less complex a subtest that will cover things like point at the letter, point at the word. And they are truly basic, just to find out where students are at that time. And then as the year goes on, that complexity happens. And so by the end of the year, students are asked to identify sight words. There's decode nonsense words. There's word segmenting, and so on. So we do see the tests increase in complexity. Nonetheless, we still want to see our students moving at that same developmental level. So some of the things that we, diving deeper a little bit into this particular one, we do see that our scope and sequence is definitely an area to dig into, and it will most likely be covered within the next year because, for example, in the spring, our students are asked to do word segmenting on three sound words. But FastBridge, that's within our curriculum. But FastBridge is assessing them on four sound words. So we do have an alignment issue with some of our scope and sequence that we do know is going to be addressed with the new adoption of an ELA program. So that is just one of those areas that we are digging, that digging deeper into it, you can see. But I do want to point out a positive, looking at the longitudinal chart, just seeing that the work, the professional learning, the teachers' efforts, the students' efforts, the families' efforts, all of that, we are seeing those gains, and the percent of students who are in the low risk level. So we are seeing that longitudinally. There's something to celebrate there, but we still have to push ourselves for keeping our kids up with the expectations throughout the school year, or making sure that our work is aligned and the scope and sequence is aligned to meet those expectations. So moving on to first grade, a lot of that is somewhat similar. When we get into the winter and to the spring of the first grade early reading, we will see, we start to introduce the CBM reading assessment. So that, there are some changes to the test, but it's not as much as what happens in the kindergarten level. We do see that first grade, when you dive into this data a little bit deeper, we do see some, some areas that we need to address, particularly with things like decoding and fluency, which our literacy coordinator has already dug into by providing some professional training for our teachers on decoding and fluency. Those are all aligned with the letters training that is happening. But we do see, we don't see the trajectory going longitudinally. We want to see that increase. We want to see all of our students performing in that low-risk area at the 80% or higher. So we do have, first grade is definitely an area of to dig in deeper and to look at those sight words, that fluency, that decoding, and things like that, to make sure that our students are progressing throughout the school year. We do see that growth in cohort, but we do think we could do better. Next slide. Okay, this is particularly aligning with the CBM. So although CBM is a part, is an embedded into the comprehensive score for early reading, we're pulling this one out because we are able to look at CBM reading from first grade all the way to third grade, so we get a better look at that cohort information. So when it comes to CBM, and we're looking at the 80% of our students that are in that low-risk and are advanced, we are, we are getting, we are hitting that. So now it's time to think about, okay, how can we increase that expectation? How can we move that to maybe 85%? So, and also, not only that, but keeping our students, not just expecting them to be in that low-risk and advanced, but if they're in advanced, let's keep them in advanced. Let's keep moving our students up. So there's, although we are hitting that, and it's something to celebrate, there's definitely areas that we can grow and look and improve within this particular one. But overall, we are seeing that our students are responding to the work that's being done to help show the evidence of learning within the CBM reading. So, just kind of pulling that one out. All right, getting to second grade. Second grade is going to be a highlight for the discussions for today. If we look at where students came in on the performance level chart, we're going to see that our students were in that, were at 59% low and advanced. And then by spring, we see 73% of our students are low and advanced. So we really have to give a shout out to our second grade teachers for meeting our students where they were in the fall and where they took them into the spring. So there's a lot of things to highlight. If you also look at the, the high risk, we have 17% of our students coming in in the fall. This is in the second to the third week of school. This is when our teachers are just meeting our kids, getting to know them, assessing them, finding out where they are, and then we definitely see that decrease over time. So there's a lot of great growth happening within the second grade. And we see that longitudinally, we are, we made a positive yard there. We have, we moved to that 73% of our students are low or advanced at the second grade level. So it's about continuing to increase that. I also think it's important to highlight here, the prime example of what I'm talking about, when students are coming in and they're performing okay, and they're, they're in that lower advanced, how do we keep moving our kids from even that low risk to that advanced level and keep pushing it? In second grade, there's some example here of 30% of our students were advanced in the fall, and we moved to 40% in the spring. And so that is something that we want to see. Okay, moving into second grade CBM, again, a shout out to our second grade teachers. If you look at the fall performance level chart, you'll see that 70% of our students came in in the fall at the low and advanced performance level. And by the end of the year...
Hey Jill, can you say low risk? Could you keep saying low? And I want to make sure people understand that it's advanced and they're low risk. Okay?
Yes, thank you. And that's also so important that you said that as well, because I'm so sorry. It's important that you said that because it's different when you move to NWEA. And so, so sorry about that. Thank you. So 70% of our students were in the low risk, which is the highest that you can be in that particular assessment. I thought I was doing so well, too. I was moving along.
You're doing great.
No, I'm so sorry.
I just wanted to hear the word "low risk," not "our kids come in advanced and low."
Thank you so much. So embarrassed. Okay. So from the fall to the spring, we see that they moved from that low-risk and advanced to that 81% were low-risk and advanced. And so that is, those are some amazing gains for our, for our second grade teachers. And again, looking at that higher risk of 18% when they came in to that 6% when they left, again, very positive information there. All right, so auto reading, just to give you a little bit of information about auto reading. Auto reading is a computer-based assessment, and it breaks down specific skills and subtest. In this particular assessment, we're looking at encoding, word identification, and vocabulary. So here we can see our students were at the, were at 73% low risk when they came in at the beginning of the year, and moved to 77% low risk by the end of the year. So I do have an asterisk down at the bottom of the fall assessment. It shows that we don't have much risk, and we think there's a glitch in the FastBridge reporting system, which they're typically pretty slow at correcting. So I just wanted to point that out, that, that percent of students who are low-risk in the fall may not be 100% accurate. We think there's something wrong with their, their metric. So just pointing that out. But it doesn't appear to be like that when you look at the winter and spring. So if it's all about the spring, we believe that to be correct, correct and accurate. So just to give you, you know, that growth from the fall to the, all to the spring. Moving on to third grade A reading, and some of the things to highlight here for the A reading. This is where the A reading assessment is when students come in and really apply. It's more about that application. It's a broad-based, computer-based assessment. And so here in third grade, our students came in with 71% at the low-risk and advanced, and left at the 73% low-risk and advanced. So it's, it's some growth. Definitely would like to see more growth within that. Always wanting to get to that 80% of our students at low-risk and advanced. But I, this is where I do want to point out some information regarding how we are viewing this data. So we're looking at this as a district as a whole. If I were to break this down into some of our individual buildings, there are buildings that have definitely, definitely met that 80% and even surpassed it. So when we're looking at this as a district of, as a whole, we're looking at 73%. But if I were to go in and look at each individual building, there, we wouldn't see the same percentage. And so it really gives an opportunity to celebrate some of the buildings that are making those gains, have some conversations with buildings that are not, and also an opportunity to collaborate on some, what are some of the positive, good practices that are happening in one building? And how can we get those consistent throughout our entire district? Okay, so now we're looking at third grade CBM performance level. This one is a part of our compass goal as well, like the third grade A reading, wanting to see our students at 80% or higher on their performance level. Here you can see that we are at 84% on our CBM performance level by the end of the year. So this gives us a great opportunity to increase that expectation, maybe bump it up to 86%, 90%. We'll see where we can go. There's some buildings that are very high, and this, you know, almost there. And so that's definitely something we can look at, increasing our expectations for students. Third grade auto reading, same subtest. Looking at that, we see an increase from the fall of 78% of our students low-risk, and moving that to 81% of our students who are low-risk in the spring.
All right, so kind of a summation of the FastBridge scores from K through 3. Just wanted to point out some of the things I think are important as we look at the data. Data gives us a direction of where we need to go with our students. So I think it's always important to look at cohort growth and not get wrapped up in one year at a time, because it's the big picture of, of moving those kids. And as a principal, I remember times when we would have some kiddos come in in first grade, and we, numbers wouldn't be where we wanted to. But I was always happy that by fifth grade, we had those kids where we wanted them to be and ready for middle school. So it doesn't happen overnight, but change takes a little time. And I think it's important to look at that cohort growth over the years. Goes in the second bullet of, when we look at this, you know, I like to look at it over the four years. And even if you look back, if the second and third grade A reading, kindergarten auto reading, it sticks out, too, of how much different the results were getting. So as Jill mentioned, that A reading is an application test. We never really gave anything like that in second grade previously to the starting FastBridge. So to see the growth we've had in that over the last five, six years is great to see. The, I think the third one's probably the most important one is, and this is what I said last year at this meeting, is, you know, how can we be responsive to our students? This is the personalized learning piece of, what do we need to do? So we look at our kiddos are in high risk, you know, who are they? Why do we feel they're in high risk? And how are we going to respond to them? Colin, could you go back one slide? So if we look at that red there in the spring, 6% of those students, so we need to dig into those students and find out, okay, why do they end up high-risk? The first thing we do is we give a diagnostic, several diagnostic tests. And there's a lot of times when those students, you know, maybe they had a bad day when they were taking it, and again, after we do the diagnostics, they truly aren't low-risk. So after we do further diagnostics, they wouldn't actually be in that red. But once again, these assessments are important so that we can find that out, and we know which children we're going to give those diagnostics to.
Can I interrupt with one question on that?
Sure.
Where is, who starts that process? Is that something that you guys see, and then you go to the principal, and then she goes to the teacher? Or does the teacher see it and go up? Or did the parents notice it? Or is it just any combination of those?
After we give the universal screening, the reading specialist and Dr. Walter will sit down and go through and identify all the students who identify as high-risk. And then the reading specialists are actually going to give those diagnostics. So the parents are going to get this report that says, oh, you're in high-risk. But we can usually give a follow-up then of, hey, we give further diagnostics, and we're okay. We're right where we need to be. Or we're going to get you into reading intervention, give you the help that you need. These are also the students that are going to end up with a reading success plan. So after the diagnostics, if we feel like, yes, they are at risk, those are the students who are going to write a success plan, which then will be spelled out of exactly what we're going to do so we can get you back where you need to be as soon as possible. And that's per DSE now, that was part of Senate Bill 681. We'd already had it in place, so we just fine-tuned it to meet their needs. But those students who are in the red, they're the ones that get the reading success plan. And then it'll be a nice little action plan pointed out. But that's really where the, the hard work comes in, is once we identify these students, what are we going to do to get them where we want them to be? How are we going to get them to grow? And on the flip side of that, also, you can go back to that summation slide, Colin.
Craig, I'm sorry. There will be students who already have a, a plan, right? So some of those students might already have a plan.
Everyone who's been in our reading intervention program, we've already been using a success plan for them.
But I mean, we need to go look at those kiddos. They might already come in with that information.
Yeah, one of the things we always look at, now this would be where the principal comes in. I usually would sit down with the principals, and we'll look, and it's like, okay, here's our students who are in high-risk, you know, do we already have a reading success plan? Are they getting reading intervention? Are they getting services for being multilingual? Are they getting services in special education? What are we doing? And it's important to find those kids, like, oh, this kid's high-risk, and we've got, we haven't got anything set up for him. Those are the ones we want to make sure don't slip through on us, and we catch all these kids and respond to them how we need to. And then on the flip side of that is the enrichment. Also, if we find someone who's just hitting it out of the park on these universal screeners, we want to, you know, do what we can. We don't want them to just stagnate there. We want to be able to push them forward. And that's where, you know, once again, I say responsive teaching, a lot of personalized learning, making sure that we're doing the best we can, because we want to move those kids forward no matter where they come in.
How often do the reading success plans get updated and reviewed for...
It's every year.
Okay.
It's an annual plan. Now, you could have students exit at any time during the year. If we gave the winter screening and diagnostics and found, hey, you're no longer at risk, we, you know, we don't need, we don't feel you need this extra intervention. Sometimes we monitor a little bit for a while to make sure it's accurate before we exit people. But our reading specialists do a wonderful job of, they're giving those students that extra time they need, and very specific. So when Jill was talking about those subtests that are in the, the auto reading, it really targets exactly what. So she mentioned nonsense words. So if a student can't read a nonsense word, that means, oh, we can't decode. So, you know, let's, let's figure out what, what our problem is there with decoding. Do you not have phonemic awareness? You know, what do we need to do here? So then we can work on exactly what the students need so we can get them back up to where they need to be in the gen ed classroom.
Okay, thank you.
So, and if a student would be in reading more than one year, we would update their plan every year. And then I just wanted to also mention that Benchmark, we've, all the materials are here. It's out in the buildings. Over half the staff came to training last week, and we have another. We'll get the rest of our teachers next Wednesday with the initial training for Benchmark. And, you know, anytime we adopt a new program, you have to be a little patient, because programs are built that our third graders, that third grade material is built acting like those students have had it for three years already, and that won't be the case. So we, it always takes a couple of years to get our, our feet under us doing those practices for Benchmark. So, but I'm optimistic, and I'm looking forward to seeing what effects it will have on our reading data over the next several years. Any other questions for FastBridge?
Does Benchmark come with a, a new series of tests, or is it the same tests that we're...
They have, they have some assessments, but we will, per the state, we are going to have to use something different as our universal screener. So Benchmark has some weekly assessments that teachers can give their students, which teachers will love because it's something they haven't had in the past. So they can, it will also help with their, when they're doing their progress reports or report cards, for collecting evidence of learning for the students. So that's going to be great, but we'll still have a separate, outside of Benchmark, universal screener, too, that I think Jill might talk about that a little bit at the end of the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to iReady, but before we do, I just had a thought that popped up. I wanted to make it also clear that although students may not be moving at a risk level, we are seeing growth within their score. So they may be showing some positive gains in their results, but it may not be at a level that moves them from one risk level to another. So that is something to note, that within each of those risk levels, there's this child, there's a story, and there's gains that they're making individually. So that's one of those things to consider when we're looking at all of this. So for a student to move, particularly when we get to NWEA, for students to move a risk level, they have to make more than average growth. So the growth has to be pretty aggressive for them to move from one risk, risk level. We'll call that a quintile when we get to that assessment, but that's one of the things to consider. Also, we're going to talk about, well, we'll dig into iReady. So iReady is our math assessment for students in K through 3, which is going to change. And I'll talk about that a little bit at the end with our third grade. But for now, we'll dig into kindergarten. So iReady is a grade assessment. It's criterion-based, and it's also norm-based. So we have, we have some good things to look at. So what that means is we will have a benchmark, not the benchmark reading assessment. We'll have a benchmark showing, meaning this is where students should be at that particular grade level, but we'll also have norm references. So we'll be able to see, and now how are they doing in comparison to their peers? So we have both of those things existing within iReady. So it's a great tool. So you will see that the expectation, even from the fall, even from the very first time that they take this test, they're being measured on, are they on grade level? But we also have to understand, these are, that on-grade level, and those, those skills and standards being taught are what they should, which they should develop by the end of the year. So you're always going to see this very low percentage of students on grade level in the fall. It's different than FastBridge, and it's different than even NWEA. So you're going to see that, because if students are all on grade level in the fall, then they could jump. You know, they're, they're, they're not, they're, they're not at that level of learning and progressing throughout that particular year on those particular standards. So we see here...
Hold on, once, I have a question.
Sure, sure.
So basically, it is the same test, in a way? They're being tested on the same things in the fall as they are in the spring?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, these are the, these are end-of-the-year outcomes for students.
So if you had an individual student, and you want to see with iReady, you want to see their scores going up like this, but on maybe like NWEA or something? If you had a student who was always at, you know, right here, they, it wasn't actually showing growth. They're actually growing because they're learning the new stuff that they should be learning. So seeing a flat score isn't no growth on the NWEA.
No, they're just showing that they're maintaining, they're still at that achievement level of being on target. But we do, we want to see them move up in their, we want to see that scale score go up, and we want to see their, their placement level, if you will, go up as well. So, but I will say that there is, there, they could be moving up, but that doesn't mean they're going to move to a different placement level of being multiple grade levels above, you know, so. In the kindergarten example, you will not see a less than a grade level, less than on-grade level, because there is no pre-assessment for the kindergarten. So it's on-grade level, or less than, excuse me, let me put my glasses on here. So less than one level below, but there will not be more than one level below, is what I'm trying to say, because there's no more than one level below. So we see where our students come in in the fall at that 16%, and we see quite the gains from those students moving to the right place and by spring. So we're seeing that 81%, which we, we really look at that 80% plus. We want more than 80%, but looking at our, are the things that we're doing in our tier one working to get our students on that grade level? And so we are seeing that. We're also seeing, if you look at the longitudinal, longitudinal charts, that teachers are in their second year of implementing the iReady curriculum, but also this... But also this administering this assessment, so we see a gain in the longitudinal data here as well. Moving on to first grade. Here, we see where our students come in in the fall, um, and where they go into the spring, seeing that definitely seeing that increase, you see that decrease in the number of students who are more than one grade level below, that twelve percent. And ending the year at that three percent of more than one grade level below. We do see an increase in the longitudinal from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three. But we do see our cohort going down from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three. So I think that this is definitely an area to dig in kind of with first grade with the reading. Looking at first grade with math as well, where are some of those things that we can continue to push um, for our students and making sure that we're maintaining those high expectations um, for all of our students. So again, I want to point out here, looking at this from the district lens, that satellite view, that big. Um, we do see that seventy-one percent at the end of the year, but I do have to mention that we have particular buildings that are far exceeding that. And so just, you know, this is a way again to go in and celebrate some of those buildings that are hitting this um, target and doing really, really well and also having um, some conversations with some particular buildings that can definitely grow in this area, but I will mention that we have buildings that are almost at ninety percent of their students are on grade level. So that's one of the things I wanted to point out there. Going into second grade. So here we will see that same kind of, same kind of growth from the fall to the spring and getting our students on grade levels, definitely seeing that decrease in the number of students that are more than one grade level um, below to um, three percent in the spring that are more than one grade level below. It's important to note that that in that yellow are students that are so close to being on grade level, it's a particular skill or something that can be addressed, um, so they're very, very close. They're less than a year behind, so I don't want that to look um, the same as maybe that that students are just not getting it, there's just some areas that they need to um, you know, to um, I guess dig into a little bit more. But we are seeing some growth in cohort from first grade to second grade. So those are some of the things I wanted to point out on that. All right, third grade and the last year that we are going to, the last grade level that we're going to report on iReady. Um, where our students are, we do see an increase in, we do see a one percent on our more than one level above and less than one level above, it gets kind of wordy um, when we get into that, but just sharing that, but we definitely do see that increase in our students who are on level and that decrease in the students who are more than one grade level below.
All right, so instead of instead of bullet points, I did something a little different here, so this is some information. iReady is great because they meet with me three or four times a year. Uh, and share data, we get to have conversations about it and set goals for the district and what we need to do, so. This is uh, just the pre-test, post-test is to show the growth that happened. Uh, you know, hard work of our students and teachers and families to to move the needle for our students' learning, so you see in the fall where the kiddos came in and then there they are in the spring. Uh, now this includes K through five. Um, we only report on K through three here because um, four and five take the N W E A, so we're letting that be our main math assessment. Uh, but just overall, there's twenty-nine hundred students and it shows the growth that they made over the year. Next slide, Colin. Uh, the next two, I I think are important, uh, just looking at the quadrants here of we want high growth. Uh, of course you want high performance or high achievement and high growth, but uh, the main thing is we want to show growth. Uh, and it was great to see that all six of the elementary schools ended up in the quadrant that would be the the dream quadrant of high performance and high growth. And if you go to the next slide, Colin. Uh, all, so all six grade levels ended up in the quadrant we would want them to be in, so um. This was, was this the second or third year of iReady? Second?
It's the second.
Second year, uh, so we didn't have too much of an implementation hiccup with iReady. It wa- it was kind of a change in instruction, but teachers embraced it, kids uh, are being very successful with it. So very, very happy with it. Uh, also, we've got the My Path, the personalized learning, so kids can get on the uh, device on their own time and work on the skills they need to work on, and that's directly tied to uh, the diagnostic test uh, that they take, so when they take that one in the fall, that sets their their path. Uh, teachers can make assignments that they want on that, but uh, the computer will take care of it by setting the path based on their initial screening.
Is there a similar intervention plan like on, like we have on reading for?
We do not have it the same way as reading, so it's going to fall to the classroom teacher. Um, so when they, um, I'm trying to, I'm blanking on the type of lesson, so iReady has different kinds of lessons and one of them is a I can't think of it right now, but it's a chance to kind of review and go back over stuff, and if you need to build in a couple of those days into your pacing as you're doing the instruction, you absolutely can. Uh, so teachers, when they find that that group that might need a little intervention, uh, they're going to do that within their classroom on those days when they have those review days. Um, oh, the buildings, uh, also how they do um, what I need or intervention time within their building. You might even have teachers on a grade level exchanging some some students, so that these students need help with geometry and these students need help with multiplication and send me your kids that need help with uh, place value. Uh, just to uh, be as productive as they can with the time, you know, it's finite time in the day to get all this stuff in, so they
Absolutely.
Uh, try to be smart about it.
But we do have math intervention services, it's just not a written down plan like a reading.
Yes, so we do have, uh, every building has so many hours of um, math teaching assistants who go in. And uh, they're going to work with it's really early intervention, they're primarily focused on our first and second graders. Because the belief is that if we can get things fixed there and they can develop good numbers since down in first and second grade, you won't have a need for it when you get to fourth and fifth.
Thank you.
But they do not have a written success plan for math. Any other questions about iReady?
Okay, so we're going to dig into N W E A, and so when I say low in any circumstance in this, it's not good. Okay, so just it, the, the um, it changes, so I just want to let you know and be very clear, so um, I'm going to talk a little bit about N W E, N W E A here, which is a computer-based adaptive assessment for our students, so what that means with adaptive is our students come in and and start the test and the test changes um, in complexity. Depending on how students answer the questions, whether they get them right or wrong, the test will adjust to their level. So um, we have been doing N W E A for three years now, we started twenty-twenty-one right when our students were coming in on um, some hybrid or um, virtual experiences. And so we are, we are just, you know, like getting better with it, I think, every single year and thinking about ways to um, improve our results with it and use the data. So particularly with this year, one of the things that we are seeing a pattern of, and I was so fortunate enough to go to an N D and I always say N E A, but or N W A, I'll say either one, but I always go to an, um, I got to go to an N W E A conference. And one of the things that was kind of a pattern um, among other districts in the United States who are using this particular assessment is really keeping our students motivated. Particularly by the spring to um, you know, take this test seriously and to um, continue to do it, and I, for the most part, I do see that when I look at some um, particular students, particularly students who maybe struggle with um, you know, that stamina to keep going with their assessments and to understand what this assessment means to me. So one of the things that we've worked on at the middle school particularly, particularly was getting our students engaged in goal setting and really helping them understand, here are your scores, what are some of your, your um, what are some of the goals that you want to set for yourself for the next test window? See if you can achieve those and get them very engaged in their experience and also look into the results of the assessment and say, where are some where are one or two things that I can improve? And so getting them um, involved in that goal setting process, and so we have some goal setting data, um, sh- I guess Excel, Google Sheet type things set up for students so that they they can go in and start to track their data along the way. And I will say that at the elementary, it looks a little different, some of those they're drawing on their own just piece of paper, sh- um, shading in as their um, RIT scores, their, that's their scale score continues to improve. So that is definitely, I think, one thing that we're seeing some positive um, gains from at the middle school. Getting those kids engaged in that goal setting experience for themselves. So when we're looking at N W E A data results and the performance levels, we're going to be looking at quintiles. So you'll see there's a low, which is not good, um, low average. The low will be um, presented in the red, the low average in the yellow. The average is in that lighter shade of green, hot, excuse me, high average is in, continues to get darker. And then you get that high percent, so high quintile, which is the darkest of the green on this particular um, on this particular chart, so what we are wanting to see is that our greens of all shades are at that eighty percent or higher. And so we are referring that to, referring to that as eighty percent of our students are showing either average to high, they're they're in those average to high quintiles. Does that make sense? I just wanted to, okay, so we're looking at that eighty percent when we are going into this. So if you look at fourth grade, we are at that seventy-eight, um, seventy-eight percent of our students are in that average to high quintile for N W E A, so we're we're getting close to that eighty. And in some circumstances, we hit it in some buildings. Um, but as a district, the whole we, we're we're getting there, but we're not quite there yet. So we are seeing um, you know, an increase from the previous year longitudinally. But one of the things I want to highlight on this particular chart is looking at that advanced. Um, this is another example of looking at, okay, if we have our students in that average to high quintile, how are we continuously moving kids up? And so we see that increase in that advanced um, quintile, and so we want to see that always, but on this particular fourth grade one, it's there, so I really wanted to point that out. Let's keep pushing our students. So moving on to the next slide, we're getting
I have another question, I'm sorry.
Please.
Do you, and you might not know off the top of your head, um, what are like the cutoffs for those percentile categories? For example, like low average, does that cover like ten percent to thirty percentile?
Sure, so the low is the um, goes up to the twenty-first percent or twentieth percentile. And then when you get into low average, you're looking at the twenty-first to the fortieth percentile.
To fortieth?
Yeah, to the fortieth.
Okay, but like on a bell curve, like from my assessment classes in college, average is actually considered twenty-fifth to seventy-fifth percentile, correct?
Well, that is probably with it, it depend, but like the average is fiftieth percentile.
Right.
So that's there, but what they're saying is that students in the average here is in the forty-first to the um, sixtieth percentile. So when we're looking at N W A, average is forty-first to sixtieth.
Okay.
So typically what you're going to look at in there is uh, they're they're within a standard deviation of being within that that average um, fiftieth percentile. So we're looking at that forty-first percentile and above. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So I highlighted that um, gr- on that reading one that grows, so moving on to math. Moving on to math in fourth grade, there's definitely some things to highlight here from the fall. Having seventy percent of our students in that average to high quintile to seventy-seven percent in that average to high quintile, so definitely something to um, highlight on this particular chart for the fourth grade. And then we see from the very beginning when they started to administer this assessment to now, we're seeing an increase longitudinally.
And I know we've said it, but I just think it's important, especially coming after iReady data where you're looking at end of year outcomes and seeing how kids progress towards those end of year outcomes over the course of the school year. If we were to see this fall data, it's seventy percent of our students were in the average to high in the fall and then we kept them at seventy percent in the spring, that is a full year's growth. So we actually add value to their learning experience when we exceed beyond whatever the assessment data showed us in the fall. So I think that's really important as we continue to look at the N W E A data, that that that's actually growth beyond a year's learning.
And again, like the other assessments, students are showing growth. We could go through and look at a data wall of each student's score at the beginning of the year to the end of the year and they may show growth, but if they don't show the growth at the fifth percentile or higher and they're not going to um, move into different quintiles. So moving on to fifth grade, here we see that our students um, from the fall, we dropped a percent from the fall to the um, to the fall to the spring, but one of the things to highlight on this particular um, slide is that longitudinal data where our students, where our fifth grade was when we started implementing this in twenty-twenty-one and where we ended this year. So we're definitely, it, I would lean from this information that teachers are starting to look at this data, use this information and respond to it and put some changes in um, instructionally into the classroom. We're also seeing that increase in the cohort data as well. And I will say that some buildings exceeded the eighty percent um, as well on that particular goal when you looked at just their building. Oh, I'm sorry, I just was jumping through, okay. So getting into, getting into math, again, um, looking at that um, growth decrease as well um, by a percent. Something with that in fifth grade, um, that could be a student, um, students still showing growth, but not making it at that fiftieth percentile or greater. Um, moving on to that longitudinal chart, you'll see that there is quite an, also an increase in the start of using this assessment tool to now and seeing that they're definitely using this to um, make some changes in the classroom. Okay, now next slide.
All right, so a lot of the things I said about Fastbridge, I would say for N W E A also, i- it's giving us a direction of where we need to go with our students. One thing I like about a growth assessment, like a sort of through assessment, that's some success ready terminology. Uh, is that teachers, you still get, when when I was a teacher, I gave the math test at the end of the year and I didn't get the results till you know, sometime next year, it's too late, I can't do anything with it, I can't fix anything. Teachers now, I was like, okay, here they were in the fall, here they are in the winter, I still got some time before the end of the year, I can make some adjustments uh, in the instruction and the learning, um, so it's a good assessment. Uh, one of the things that I would say with N W A and um, iReady both being adaptive test. Sometimes there's a challenge for the students and the teachers because it's different. Uh, because you're not supposed to get all the questions correct. You're not supposed to ace and get a one hundred percent because it's going to get progressively more rigorous to find out where is your ceiling? And some teachers and you know, and and students, they want to, they want to get a hundred percent on an ace and that's, that's not how they're designed to do and they sometimes get distraught that these questions are too difficult for our kids, and I was like, well, it's, it's just trying to find out where they are at. Uh, so one thing to keep in mind with these, uh, I would also say that um, teachers are making those adjustments within year, but I think in the big picture we would focus on with N W A is four through grades eight and nine, and look at that cohort growth over those multiple years to really see you know, are we, are we moving the needle uh, with our students' learning, and I guess that will be third through eight and nine here coming up next year. Um, and he, once again, we're just gonna, it's going to point us in a direction, we're going to respond to individual students' data and uh, Jill had mentioned the RIT scores. Um, and I always talk to the principals and I I'm hoping that they're talking to teachers about is we want to set goals for our students based upon our standards that we work with that will, that are on this test, we identify which standards, which so Dr. Lake took it and he didn't do well in this standard, so then as a teacher, I can go and work with him on that one, it's like, okay, by the time we take this in spring, we're going to get you turned around. Uh, and that will affect that RIT score then, but we need to, I want the teachers working with the proficiency scales on those standards with the students to to give us those overall RIT scores above, because what I don't want to get into is like, hey, Ronnie, you got a two fifteen on the N W A, what's that mean? You know, but I want to be able to say, okay, we need to work on two D figures and we need to work on measurement, we need to work on this. Um, and I think that's where we're going to make more of a difference in in our student learning with these results.
And Craig, those are Missouri standards?
Correct.
Yes, Missouri State standards.
So I like with this that it's so easy to see where um, where a kid needs help at any one child, but for a teacher who has to look at all of their students and they're all going to have different combinations of which standards they need help with, who helps them figure out how to? who helps them figure out how to, how to make this happen in the classroom?
Well, that's an exciting thing. I'm, that's where I get more excited to talk about, like what we can do with the data. And, and so one of the things that's in the reports on NWEA is really, it, it pretty much lays that out there. Where are our students falling within the, because we have students falling in a continuum of all different places. And so it breaks down like what strand the students are struggling in. So if you are getting ready to cover a particular unit on literary, some kind of literary elements, I can see where my students are across that continuum of where they are in learning. So I can use that to differentiate in the classroom on, okay, these students may need a little bit more structure and attention and some particular, I guess, preloading of skills while these students are already there and can be enriched. And so it does lay it out for the teachers in some of the reports on exactly what they can do with where students are.
Julia, let me make sure that you answer, were you wanting to know like who helps our teachers? Do they have time to dig into this data? Is that kind of what you were getting at?
Yeah, I answered half of it.
Yeah, that answered half. So I, I think what she's wanting to kind of know is, you know, who helped, because our teachers are busy, right? We all know that. We always talk about the, the teacher in the classroom. And so we have all this rich data and all this information. And then I guess my question too is, are we accessing it to its fullest? And who, you know, we got instructional coaches, we have other people. So just if you can talk about that a little bit.
We have PLCs that also, the PLC time where teachers can get together and look through their data, particularly when it's available after the end of the test panel. Next year, we have data days built into the school calendar that are aligned to the testing window so that teachers can actually have time to dig into this information and have conversations within their professional learning communities on what are our students doing well? Where, where do we need to do some additional work? And then also like what is that action plan? What is that going to look like? Who can we, you know, if one particular teacher is doing really well in an, an area and another teacher is like, oh, my kids aren't getting it, they can collaborate on best practices of what's happening. So it does happen in a couple of different ways. So when the data comes out, I typically will work with school administrators, will do a report to all of our administrators. Administrators go back to the buildings, they're talking with individual teams and teachers and talking about their data. Then from there, the PLCs are then looking at their, their data and taking, I guess the conversation goes towards, what can we do for individual students that need work? And all along that we have school supports. We have administrators helping our teachers, we have instructional coaches helping our teachers, we have a literacy coordinator helping our teachers, Craig and Ronnie are helping teachers, I'm helping teachers as well. So we have a, a lot of support on how we can go in and, you know, take action on when we get these results.
I want to add that, I know we're talking NWEA, but I Ready makes it very easy because it's, because that assessment is tied to the program that we use, that after they take the diagnostic, they can click on and it'll like this student, which standards did they not do very well on? You can click on that standard and it will take you down, here's what you need to do to, it will tell you, go back and do these lessons with them, have them do this MyPath lesson. So I mean, it's just a couple clicks and it will take you exactly what it thinks those, those students need. Any other questions K through five? Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to start, this is going to start out just a little, with a little bit of work when we get to sixth grade. So sixth grade is definitely going to be an area of focus for us. I kind of talked about that a little bit with first grade, and now I'm going into that with sixth grade. So what we see here is sixth grade, our students are coming in at that seventy, or are coming in with seventy four percent of our students that are at that average to high. And we see that decreases seventy one percent by the end of the year. Now that could be over, you know, multiple things, but nonetheless, that's what we're seeing. And, and not only are we seeing it with this year, but we're seeing it as a pattern, so over time. So we, this is definitely an area that we want to go in and, and focus on. Although longitudinally, we're seeing that they, we are getting better. We do think that there is an opportunity for us to support sixth grade, work with our teachers, give them time to dig into the data and to take some action with it. So this will be a focus for twenty three, twenty four, on how do we keep the expectations high? How do we keep the rigor high? And continue to support our students, challenge them, instruct them so that they are starting to learn. So sixth grade, definitely an area to dig into for sure. When we get into sixth grade math, we see, we see it a little bit similar. It's, it's pretty stagnant from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. Although we do see an increase in the number of our students who are advanced, which, or excuse me, who are high. So that is amazing. And also who are high average, we do think that we can continue to, you know, push and have those high expectations and get some better results. So similar to the reading, we want to also keep the, keep our students challenged and keep stretching our students so that we can see that positive increase in that high performance. So when we get to seventh grade, this is going to be interesting because I want to show you the seventh grade here and how that relates to sixth grade. So in sixth grade, from the fall to the spring, we do see an increase in the students who are average to high, in the average to high quintile. And we are seeing that from the beginning of administering this task in the longitudinal, that we are getting an increase. But one of the things I want to point out about seventh grade is that cohort. So we see that dip in the sixth grade. If you look at that cohort, this, in twenty one, twenty two, we see that dip from fifth grade to sixth grade, and then we see seventh grade, it go back up. And so I think that's important to notice that, that we're seeing seventh grade start to pull students back up because like I said, that sixth, sixth grade is an area to dig into. And so we're pulling our kids back up when we look at that cohort data.
And I would add, you know, while the conversation about sixth grade is extremely important, that is a national dip that you see happen. So that has been common, we've talked about it for years. I think in the time that I've been here, there's only been one year that we didn't see a sixth grade dip. It's not an excuse by any means. We do need to look at the level of rigor and how we are holding kids to high expectations as we make that transition. Because the conversation usually does revolve around the fact that, okay, they're sixth graders, we've got to help them. They've come off of really high achievement scores coming into fifth grade. How do we continue that trajectory for them? So I, while, yes, we need to give that attention to sixth grade, I don't want it to seem like that's an anomaly because as you look at the norms across the nation, you would see that pattern universally.
Okay, getting into seventh grade math. Same thing, some of those same particular patterns. We do see an increase from fall to spring. We see an increase in the percent of our students who are in that high quintile and high average quintile. We are seeing things move in the right direction longitudinally. And we are also seeing that cohort do that same, same dip from fifth to sixth and then back up to seventh. So definitely some things to look at for our sixth grade. And also that's some celebration of pulling students up in that seventh grade, but continuing to push and challenge our students.
I have a question about that sixth grade data, and I'm going to bet the answer is no. But does NWA, when you're looking at it nationally, do they look at schools that are six to eight or versus five to eight or K to eight? Because the fact that most schools, it's a transition year where you're moving and you're making new friends, and now you have to, there's all this social stuff that isn't there. I wonder if that dip would still be there in schools that are five to eight or K to eight as there are when you move a school?
And there are schools that are K six, so.
Oh, there are.
They're just a set like, I will.
I know in Kansas City, there's a large school district that they are seventh and eighth grade, middle school, and they're K, yeah. So and then they're K six, so yeah.
I'd just be curious because I think that there's a lot of anecdotal, they're sixth graders, their whole life just changed. And so you're going to see this, but I wonder if it actually plays out in the data if you look at it.
I don't know if they've done an analysis or a report on their aggregate data regarding that. We'll give them that idea.
So moving on to eighth grade, so we definitely see some increases from the eighth grade fall to the eighth grade spring. We're, we're, have that goal that eighty percent of our students are in that average to high quintile, made that for the eighth grade reading. And so that is really great. If you look at their data longitudinally, you can see, I would, I would take away that they are looking at this and making some adjustments in their instruction and that they're, they're using the data and improving some things along the way. So that is really great. So I would say that there's a lot to celebrate with eighth grade reading.
I would just, but I want you to park for a second on that cohort because if I'm reading that right, and when they were sixth graders in the spring, they were at seventy two, right? So now they're leaving us at eighty, right?
They're leaving us at eighty.
Yeah, that's, yeah. So again, back to this transition year of coming out of elementary to now I have all these different teachers and I'm changing classes and I have more free time and all of that. So that's, that I think that's very important to highlight that cohort group.
I think it's also important is we have conversations around the Success Ready Students Network too. One of the things that we are looking at through that process is growth to standard. And the standard that you're looking at is what students achieve at the end of eighth grade to demonstrate that they are high school ready. So kind of in the same way that third grade is a really pivotal point in time where you look at reading data, eighth grade is a very pivotal time when you look at universal achievement data and student mastery of standards for high school readiness. So while you might see inconsistent data points at various points in time, the third grade and the eighth grade are the ones that we really should focus on the most for those next layers of success.
So definitely eighth grade, an area to celebrate that their, their movement, their growth for students. Let's take a look at eighth grade math. We see some of that same, same positive growth happening for students. From the fall, seventy two percent of our students were in that average to high quintile, leaving at seventy seven percent. So that growth that's happening within a year is, is pretty great. When we're looking at where our students are, we're also, we're seeing things move. Our students eighteen percent advanced in the fall, moving that to twenty three. So we're seeing kids even being challenged and stretched to increase that particular quintile, which is what we want to see as well. And then looking at this longitudinal, again, being really responsive to the data is one thing I can take away, that they are making some strong instructional curricular changes. And, and that is definitely showing up here. And as pointed out in the previous cohort data, looking at math, we see that from their sixth grade spring year to their eighth grade spring year, some growth. So they're definitely moving along when they get to that eighth grade level.
Do they take advanced high school classes in eighth grade? Do they, this is where that's reflected, or is it?
Yes, they can participate in advanced level classes. We do have our geometry students who are really advanced, take the geometry. There, it's a very small number, so that's even pulled out of this. So they're not, they weren't, they will next year take the six plus so that we can include them. That's the six plus NWEA assessment, which six plus means sixth grade through twelfth grade. So, but we pulled them out this year to give them an assessment that was right, aligned with their course. But because six plus NWEA is adaptive, we think it would be good for them to take it to show where they are in many skills, not just those aligned to just that geometry course.
Okay.
So though, it's like a very small number, but yeah, those students are pulled out of this. But yes, you're, to answer your question, students can take advanced classes in middle school.
Right, I knew that, but I was saying is that playing a factor into the jump.
It is for algebra students. It is for students that are in eighth grade algebra, it is included in here.
Okay, okay. So that might be a bit of a jump, bit of the jump.
It could be, but we also have students in seventh grade taking, you know, algebra too. So I mean, that would jump into that, maybe that seventh grade results as well.
And even those students who are taking algebra in eighth grade, they were also taking advanced math in seventh grade. So it really speaks to the fact that it's just targeting specifically what is the data telling us and how do we use it to inform instruction?
Okay, and last one, moving on to our English one, NWEA. So here we are seeing some great gains from the fall to the spring, moving our students from that eighty percent in the average to high quintile to eighty three percent in the average to high quintile. We can see this is our English one teachers, this is their second year administering this test. And so getting more familiar with the data, so longitudinally, we can see some good gains longitudinally. And definitely looking at the cohort from when students were in seventh grade to eighth, or to ninth grade, and where they are on that quintile level, that performance level. So definitely some areas to highlight for English. So when we, I'll cover this again, you'll, you'll hear it twice, but we are going to continue with our high school using NWEA. And we'll also be including our students a math assessment at the high school with NWEA as well. So we'll be able to show English and math in the future.
All right. So I think Jill covered some of this really well in talking through the data slides, starting with, you know, those, that closer look that we see that growth either within one quintile and when you drill down to the student level data in sixth through ninth grade, we see that frequently. We also see that there's growth from one quintile to the next within what we would consider like a larger risk level. So that average and above, we'll see movement from average to high average, or we'll see movement from that low to low average. And so it's not always reflective when we take this big picture look, but we know that our students, our teachers are working really hard and we are seeing that at the individual student level quite a bit. But I wanted to give you just some different views of the, the sixth through ninth grade data kind of in summary and revisit some of the things that we talked about with you last year when we gave this presentation because we had identified some opportunities last year in the secondary grade levels of where we saw potential for growth. One of those being, you may recall, we talked a little bit about testing fatigue and maybe some test apathy that we had seen with our students. In particular, in our middle school scores last year, we saw that levels of risk increased in the spring for a lot of those tested areas. And we did not see that nearly as much this year. And that really is a testament to our teachers and our students, the conversations they're having about NWEA, why it's meaningful, how it's useful to the individual student. And then also just some, some systemic changes in terms of test scheduling and test administration that we, we didn't see that spring dip like we did last year. So that's definitely a positive thing. And then as Jill already mentioned, looking at this through the teacher lens, we have seen, when you look at those blue bar graphs that are, are on all the slides, what you're seeing is the spring score from one year to the next for that same grade level. And so for example, when we look at eighth grade reading, and back in 2021, our eighth grade reading scores were at sixty seven percent. And in 2023, they were at eighty percent. So those are all different groups of eighth graders, but we're seeing their performance levels increase. And that is really a testament to the work of our teachers aligning the, the instruction that they're doing with what they're seeing out of those pieces of data they're getting from NWEA. And so they are, have opportunities in their, their teams within their buildings, their horizontal teams that go across the two middle schools, their PLC work, our vertical teams that meet sixth through twelfth grade to take a look at data and alignment. We have teachers that have really embraced the idea of data binders to have that visualization of their data to help with their conversations. And then taking that one step further to the student lens, they're doing that work with their students. Their students are keeping kind of data sheets with their own goal setting of here's how I performed in the fall, here's some areas where I could, would like to see some growth. And the teacher working with the student of here's how we're going to help work on that. And so that work is paying off. We're seeing it not just in scores increasing, but we're seeing it in that sense of ownership and taking the test more seriously. I mean, we know these are middle school kids, they're ninth grade students. How easy it would be to just click, click, click right through that test and, and be done with it. And we're seeing that it's become more meaningful for our teachers and students, which is really great because it contributes to ownership of their learning. And then I also just want to point out that at the middle school level and show some appreciation to the board that we are, this coming year, able to increase the support and reading intervention at the middle school level. And then last school year, we took our math intervention position from what had been hourly to a full-time certified teaching position. And that shows in our scores, that shows in the work with our students. NWEA is an important piece of data in referring students to those intervention programs, excuse me. So just want to say thank you because it's, it's working, it's helping, and our middle school is, they're very appreciative of that. Next slide, please. Okay, now we're jumping into high school, we're getting away from NWEA, I Ready, any of that. And we're taking a look at what some of our measures are for student achievement at the high school level. So for many, many years now, Advanced Placement or AP tests have been a large indicator for us of our, our college readiness for our students. And so it's very exciting to look at this data this year because what we've seen is really a return to our pre-pandemic levels of performance on our AP exams. So showing our, our five-year trend here, this bar graph is showing you- So showing us our, our five-year trend here, this bar graph is showing you that eighty-one percent of our AP exam scores were a three or higher. And that's out of a, a one to five scale, a three or higher. In the state of Missouri, at public universities, it is state law that this universities have to award college credit for a score of three or higher. Outside of those public state universities, it's really dependent on the institution. Um, but a score of a four or five generally is going to result in, in college credit for those students. A score of a three depends on, on the level of selectivity of that university. So we're very excited to see those rebounding, it's no surprise that they took a hit during the pandemic. The number of students taking AP exams took a hit during the pandemic, um, but we've really rebounded and um, we've, we've seen some great growth there. So, next slide please.
So, just stay on that slide for a second. So I think it's important to highlight, I, I just Googled it to make sure it was right. So it's around sixty percent is the national average of kids taking the AP exam. And when you look at that, that's pretty significant that um, across the country, you know, when a kid sits to take it, they got a sixty percent chance of getting a three or higher, where our kids got a eighty, eight, over, over eighty percent chance to get a three or higher, which is awesome.
For the, for the students represented in these AP tests, is this across from ninth through twelfth? Are there freshmen taking AP?
Great question, so um, there are a few freshmen that take an AP course. Typically, those are students that have already accelerated in certain content areas, so they've reached that AP level younger than a student typically would. Um, tenth grade is where we introduce our first AP course that is generalized for any student. And that is our AP government course in tenth grade, that's our only tenth grade course. And then eleventh and twelfth grade, we have many, many options.
Thank you.
So this is a different look and it breaks down how many tests and how many students we're talking about. So one of our goals at Lindbergh High School is we want to constantly be growing the number of our students that take an AP course by the time they graduate. And so we've, we've approached that from different angles and actually, the introduction of our AVID program next year will also help with that because we're trying to capture more students into those rigorous courses who may otherwise not have chosen them. Uh, and so again, looking at really that twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-three comparison, because we wanted to make up for some of those losses that we had during the pandemic. And we see our number of students is almost at what it was in twenty-nineteen. So we had five hundred two students take an AP exam this spring in twenty-twenty-three. And those five hundred two students took a total of nine hundred fifty-two tests. So we had a lot of students that were taking more than one AP test, probably some as many as five or six, depending on their, their class schedule. Um, and of those five hundred two students, four hundred eight of them scoring a three or higher. So that's where that uh, eighty-one percent comes from. And so again, just some data to really be proud of, that as we continue to encourage participation in AP class, we've always been really proud that um, we do not have prerequisites for participation in AP. You don't need a teacher recommendation, we encourage all students to give it a try, you know, at least one time in their high school career. And we will continue to do that, and I think it really pays off for a lot of our students. Next slide. So to break that down a little bit, we have thirty different subject tests, so thirty, thirty courses that our students can take that are Advanced Placement. And this year, twelve of those had ninety percent of our students scoring a three or higher. And we actually had four subjects that had one hundred percent of our students score a three or higher, which is pretty phenomenal and something we can all brag about. Um, so that's a great question, uh, I believe one of our world language tests, um, I think our music theory had a high pass rate. So yeah, so they tend to be those subject tests that have fewer students taking the exam, those where we're testing a hundred forty students. It's a little more difficult to hit that mark.
Well, it sounds like you do have classes that are the AP classes that are not just your core math, English classes. And I think that's great because that gives kids opportunities to explore things that maybe they wouldn't normally do in high school, so that's good. Um, I have a question on the difference between the AP and the honors. I, I don't have a kid in high school, so I don't have a lot of um, information on this, but I've talked to some people who, they struggle with should, should my student take an honors class or an AP class? And I'm just curious what, what the difference in rigor is in those, those two kinds of classes.
Sure, so honors classes are typically more for our ninth and tenth grade where we don't have an AP option yet. Um, so a, a student entering ninth grade, they may choose honors English one. If ultimately the aim is that they would like to take an AP course at some point, it's great preparation for that. But again, there's no prerequisite, so a student could very easily jump from a regular level course into the AP version of that the following year. Um, and we'd give them the support to be successful in doing that. So it, that, those honors labels are, you know, I think in some districts, they would call it pre-AP or something like that. We don't like to label it that way because we don't want to, again, indicate that it's re- a requirement. So it's, it's the same curriculum typically, but it may move a little more quickly than the non-honors version. It may go into a little more depth on certain topics, so. Alright, and then, parallel to our AP, another thing that we're really proud of is the growth of our dual credit program at the high school. And so this gives you just a sense of um, how many courses we're offering and how many students are taking advantage of those options. Uh, and one thing that we have really considered over the last few years is what would the growth in dual credit potentially do to AP participation? We wondered if students would choose the dual credit option over taking an AP test. Um, and for some students, yes, I mean, they are frankly, it's, it's the logical choice in some cases where I can earn my grade. I can get my college credit, I don't have to sit for that exam. Um, we don't see this as a bad thing, you know, I think there are some national measures that would say, you know, you're only a high performing high school if you have X number of students doing AP. We just want students taking rigorous courses and we want them to get college credit. And so what's interesting is that when we've seen the rebound in the number of students taking AP tests and taking AP courses, we haven't taken a huge hit. Um, there are isolated courses here and there where we see students choosing the dual credit route over the AP test. It's the same course in many cases, um, or in, in some cases, it's not the same course, but they're choosing um, what is really a rigorous, high-level college credit. Because these dual credit options um, are transferable to even St. Louis Community College, transferable to four-year universities as courses they would be required to take at a four-year university anyway. Um, so these are high-level rigorous courses. And just to give you a, a, a sense of growth here, St. Louis Community College in particular is where we've seen enormous growth with our student participation. So that number of nine hundred twenty seats, so again, we have many students that will take multiple courses. So those four hundred fifteen students, nine hundred twenty seats, last year we had six hundred fifty-two seats. So huge growth in that program. The reason you don't see data under uh, Missouri S and T is because we don't get that data until the students actually decide to enroll at Missouri S and T and then they can claim that credit. They don't actually claim the credit while they're with us at Lindbergh High School, and so we don't get that data back from the university. But our project lead the way programs have that option for students to get, pay for that college credit, um, if they choose to enroll Missouri S and T.
I have a question, I just want to double check, the, for St. Louis Community College is the courses that are listed here are not associated with the early college with St. Louis Community College. These are taught by Lindbergh teachers and you get credit, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, because we have roughly fifty kids that are enrolled, um, you know, as full-time college students out at the community college as well, on top of this.
So, as I look at these numbers, are there, are there students that are not getting into the courses because there's not enough seats? Or are we meeting the, the demand?
That's a great question, um, we have no quota, or we have, I should say, we have no maximum. So there's any student who wants to enroll in these, the only possible limitation is that in order to get the dual credit, there are certain um, academic expectations that the state sets for students. So the student has to earn a certain grade or ha- maintain a certain GPA. Um, and in some cases, if they have not yet taken an ACT, they may have to take an exam like an Accuplacer test, which is what the community college uses for placement. So there are multiple measures by which a student can qualify to take that college credit with them. Um, any student can enroll in the course, the real question is whether ultimately they would earn the college credit that goes with it. So they can take it at Lindbergh High School, they just have to meet those state requirements to get the college credit.
And I would say our kids drive the master schedule. I mean, Dr. Cochran sitting back there, I know when I was a high school principal, some years we might have three sections of this AP course, but for whatever reason, the next year we might have five sections of that. The kids drive what courses are offered based on the number of kids that are requesting that particular course. And it varies, then, not a lot, but it varies from year to year on number of sections, so.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure we're, we're able to scale to meet the, the demand and there's not students who feel like, oh man, I wish I could have gotten into that class, but there weren't enough seats, so, thank you.
Alright, next slide please. Um, wanted to give a quick update, this is hot off the presses, that we had fifty-nine students earn the seal of biliteracy this year. That's up from forty-nine last year and thirty-eight the year before. So again, we're seeing huge growth in some of these opportunities for our students. So that's just the breakdown of the different languages. Um, students can earn that seal of biliteracy from the state of Missouri in really any language. And so you see there, we have a student who earned it in Dutch. So oftentimes, we will have students who are not native speakers of English and they'll earn the seal of biliteracy in their native language. And so um, there is a process by which they can prove competency in that language and they can also be awarded the seal. So, great news from the class of twenty-three. Next slide. Alright, and then um, lastly, just the class of twenty-three profile. So um, y- you probably heard most of this data at graduation as we were celebrating the class of twenty-three. Um, but again, just to, to put it here before your eyes, um, huge growth in our scholarship dollars. Our Bright Flight scholarships are very strong, so that Bright Flight scholarship requires that a student earns at least a thirty-one on the ACT. So we had fifty-two students who earned at least a thirty-one on the ACT, which is really impressive. Um, our A-plus scholarships, so those students had to meet certain requirements for uh, volunteer, community service hours, maintain a certain GPA and attendance. And so those ninety-four students who are in that A-plus scholarship will attend two years of community college completely free. Uh, and then also growth in athletic scholarships, fine arts. Um, and then a quick mention on our National Merit Program, so the students who qualify for National Merit, that's based on uh, the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, which is a PSAT that they take um, their junior year. So we offer that test to sophomores and we've started a, a, a new effort to target some of our sophomore students who score well on that PSAT in tenth grade to give them support and help them um, prepare for the eleventh grade administration of that test because those National Merit um, uh, commendations do tend to result in scholarship money for students. And so we want to help make that happen for them, so we've, we've started a, some work to target those students and support them. Any questions for high school?
That's, that's awesome to see, especially some of these like Bright Flight, that follows, that's four years of scholarship. That's not just your freshman year, you get that
Right.
for four years, so there's, that's a, that's a huge accomplishment.
I think the students are catching on, that if they take the AP and they work on their scholarships, they only have to go for three years. So, I believe they're catching on to that.
A significant cost savings for, for all of us parents. Okay, thank you.
Want to wrap up our assessment report for you by just sharing some of the changes that are going to happen next year. So next year, we are not going to do FastBridge A-reading at the third grade level. We're going to um, or I-reading at the third grade level. We are going to um, put NWEA MAP Growth in place um, for our third grade students. And then also, I don't think I have it on here, oh yes, I do. So we are also going to be implementing the NWEA six-plus MAP Growth Assessment to our students who are in Algebra I. So we'll be adding that to our assessment report for next year. And then we will be investigating early reading assessments here, starting um, next week, that comply with the stated proof list. So we'll be um, sharing some updates with you as we find out more information.
Any questions or further comments?
Good job.
Yes, thank you to our teaching and learning team for presenting this evening, digging in and letting us know where we're moving in the future. Thank you guys. We will move to four point zero two, our twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-nine strategic planning process.
I'll start us off, um, we just want to have a quick conversation this afternoon about our five-year strategic planning process, which is coming up. Um, as you know, this fall, we will go through this process so that we can bring you a five-year strategic plan that is involved our community for review in February and a vote in March of twenty-twenty-four. So tonight's regular meeting agenda will include a contract and a service agreement with EGL to begin the work for you to vote on. And um, this is the result of a RFQ process that we went through, we interviewed three firms, um, and selected EGL to do this community engagement work for us. So, next month, August fifteenth, we'll have a special workshop here. Um, and we will kick that off with the representatives from EGL. They will come and walk us through the timeline, they will um, talk with the board about where the district would like to go in the next five years and really just get this process started. At the same time next month, we will be forming a strategic planning committee in our community that will meet probably about three times throughout the process. And then we're working right now to set some dates in September where EGL can go to each of our school buildings and have a community engagement events with the staff there. And then also set up two um, community-wide engagement events where they can get some feedback from our community. Um, and then, as we mentioned before, we'll also have an online survey. So, tonight, before the August workshop, we want to get you thinking about this, thinking about our work. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Lake to um, lead us in that conversation.
So um, it's hard to believe it's five years has gone by and we're starting this process again. And if you remember, five years ago, we did not have a strategic plan in place. So, I think it's important to know that um, you know, this idea of continuous improvement, I, when you look at our current strategic plan, it's not like we're just going to totally hit the reset button on our strategic plan. We're going to take input and we're going to tweak it and we're going to make modifications and adjustments because we're not starting from zero. You know, this is work and things that we've been doing. So I want to make sure we keep that in mind, that you know, we, we have a course that we set. Now, every five years, you got to do a check, is it still the right course? Or do we need to, I'll go ahead and say it, do we need to pivot a little bit out of something? Do we need to, you know, go this way? Is it still aligning with the, it, community's goals for us and asking those questions? And you know, on top of EGL doing this work, I'm also going out to do more listening and learning that I, um, I'm not doing eighty, whatever I did the first year, but I'm gonna do more than, you know, I've been doing fifteen to twenty uh, last couple of years, I'll probably do a little more than that. We also, during this time, are going to ask um, the community to rank success measures again, that was part of this process. So I will, we will collect that information and we'll also provide the success measure um, survey results to EGL to kind of help focus our work on that uh, cabinet. And we'll share this with you next week um, in your Friday packet. Um, we've kind of, um, we've added um, one opportunity for ranking of a success measure. We've kind of combined some things based on our work over the last four years to make the wording a little more clear on what does that really mean? Because again, five years ago, we were like, starting from zero, is this, is this relevant, is it not? And so just kind of making sure that we have a, a, a good list for people to be able to identify of what's important and where should we be focusing our work, along with the goals that come out of our strategic plan as well. So, and then the other thing that we're going to ask you guys to do, EGL has five standard questions they ask in their survey. We would like for you all to submit two questions that you would like asked. Um, and then we'll take a look at those and they will add those, they may add three, they may add four, you know, they'll, they'll look at them. Some of you may have the same questions and are you going to send, send those to?
Actually, that's part of the discussion next month.
Okay, nevermind.
At the workshop, so be thinking about those.
Okay, those questions, there you go.
Really, the, the idea is that those center specifically around the work that we're doing and where we want to go in Lindbergh. The rest of the questions will be fairly general.
Yeah.
But to bring those ideas to the workshop.
Yeah. And then also be thinking about people that you would like to, one, make sure that we specifically invite to the community engagements, but also be a part of the steering committee that's going to meet three or four times. So we're going to ask you to be thinking about um, six names or so, each of you. Um, and I would ask that you use a wide variety of people. Um, we'd also like to, you know, you could have a neighbor that doesn't have kids in the commu- uh, in the schools anymore, but they're very connected, they got a pulse that's going on in our entire community. Those are some of the people, it's not just the people that have kids in our school, we want to hear from, um, have a good representation, one, on the steering committee, and also making sure we bring those people to the com- specifically invite them to the community events to provide feedback as well. So if everybody can think of about six people, that would be uh, great, so, did I miss anything?
Uh, well, just to clarify, and I, I think this goes without saying, but I would like to say it to our communities aware. Those at community engagement events are open to everybody.
Everybody.
And like you said, we want to hear from those people who don't have children in the district or um, have had multiple generations go through, through the district, we want everybody. So, when we're asking you to think of those people you know who really have a good pulse on the community and are well-connected, um, can provide us with constructive feedback, those are the people that we want definitely to be there, but the invitation's open to everyone. everyone.
Everybody. Questions kind of about the process? More details will come from it as Beth, as we continue to lay it out with dates and different things like that. So, but we just wanted to kind of give you a brief overview. And again, we will ask this board to approve that plan in March prior to the April election because it's the work of this board, not a new board member coming on or new board members coming on potentially with that, so.
Thank you. We will move to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Workshop 1578?
So moved.
So moved. Motion by Julia, second by Kristi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Board Workshop 1578 is adjourned.
Board of Education meeting 1579 is now called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Andrew.
Second.
Second by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. And now we will do our pledge of allegiance. And if Cal and Kami would come up and they can lead us in the pledge. Tonight, we are recognizing Limburg Early Childhood Education. And I will turn it over to Dr. Ziegler, Principal of ECC, to present tonight.
Thank you very much. So I am so excited to announce our support staff of the year for last year. Ally Peterson, our nurse. Ally's been with us since 2016, and she is wonderful to work with. She's always willing to do anything, even if it means hopping on the front desk in the morning for just a bit. Staff lover, obviously, and I want to share a compilation of many of the kind words that they shared with me about Ally. So I'm going to read these for you. Ally, actually, will you come up and join me? Ally is always caring and takes great care of all of the students in our building. She's always available to answer any questions of families or staff, and we are so lucky to have her as our school nurse. Ally has the kindest heart and is always there for others. She takes care of our students like they're her own, and she is always smiling and bringing laughter and positivity to ECE. Ally's a great caregiver to everyone here at ECE. Children always love seeing Nurse Ally because of how sweet and caring she is with the children. And Ally is one of the most caring people I know. She takes great care of all of the children at ECE and treats them like they are one of her own.
Tonight, we are recognizing Limburg Early Childhood Education. And I will turn it over to Dr. Ziegler, Principal of ECC, to present tonight.
Thank you very much. So I am so excited to announce our Support Staff of the Year for last year. Ally Peterson, our nurse. Ally's been with us since 2016, and she is wonderful to work with. She's always willing to do anything, even if it means hopping on the front desk in the morning for just a bit. Staff lover, obviously. And I want to share a compilation of many of the kind words that they shared with me about Ally. So I'm going to read these for you. Ally, actually, will you come up and join me? Ally is always caring and takes great care of all of the students in our building. She's always available to answer any questions of families or staff. And we are so lucky to have her as our school nurse. Ally has the kindest heart and is always there for others. She takes care of our students like they are her own. And she is always smiling and bringing laughter and positivity to ECE. Ally's a great caregiver to everyone here at ECE. Children always love seeing Nurse Ally because of how sweet and caring she is with the children. And Ally is one of the most caring people I know. She takes great care of all of the children at ECE and treats them like they are one of her own. Thank you so much for your service to us, Ally. It is wonderful to have you with us. And we wanted to make this a family event also. Ally's kids are a big part of our community at ECE. And we have all four of them here tonight along with her husband Jim. We're recognizing Kami and Cal, but Charlie was with us also. And I'm sure Coco, the new baby, will be with us at some point in the future. So if I could have Cal come up? And do you think that you could get Kami to come up with you? So Cal and Kami are two of our awesome ECE students. I have some things that their teachers told me about them, and I added a few words of my own. So Cal is funny, caring, sweet, and a smart kid. He always brightens up the rooms with his smile and his laughter. He's a great Lego builder and loves doing puzzles. He's a great friend to his classmates, and he has the best sense of humor. And he loves his mommy something fierce. Whenever kids are scared to go to the nurse, Cal is the first one to tell them how cool his mommy is. Thank you, Cal, for doing such a great job being a great ECE friend. Okay. All right. And now Kami. So Kami's newer to us than Cal, but she is cute, sweet, and a sassy girl. She has a big heart and is always giving the best hugs. She loves using her imagination in the dramatic play area with dolls and the kitchen, but she loves playing with her cars, too. Kami's sweet, caring, and very independent, just like her mama. Thank you so much, Kami, for being a great ECE flyer friend.
Thank you. And we usually take a short break so that our honorees can leave if they don't want to stay for the business portion of our meeting. 5.0 consent resolutions, we have none this evening. 6.0 citizen communication regarding agenda items, there are none this evening. 7.0 communication. 7.01 calendar of events. July 21st and 28th, our district offices remain closed on Fridays. August 7th through 10th is the Limburg Teacher Institute for All New Teachers. August 9th is our Finance Board Advisory Meeting. And August 15th is our next Board of Education Workshop and Regular Meeting. Does anyone have any state, other, or parent group meetings to report on from the last month? Quiet this past month. 7.03 announcements, we have none this evening. So we will move to 7.04, Review of Upcoming Board of Education Meeting Agendas. On August 15th, we will hold another board workshop to discuss strategic planning for the 2024 to 2029 with Dr. Todd White from EGL. The regular meeting will follow with tentative agenda items that include designation of our compliance officer, safety coordinator, foster care liaison, and homeless coordinator. Other items are the re-adoption of Board Policy BBFA, annual secretary of the board report, as well as regular business items. We have no Board of Education member appointments this evening. So we will move to 7.06, our MSBA July Board Report.
Welcome to the July edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at MSBA Summer Summit held in Branson June 16th and 17th. The summit began with an inspiring keynote presentation from Dr. Jacqueline Sanderlin. Dr. Jackie is an accomplished school principal who has become famous for her straightforward, "why not" attitude, which has led to dramatic improvements in some of Southern California's most under-resourced schools. Her passion for guiding young people has garnered national recognition. Dr. Jackie said that in addition to the first four Cs, community, collaboration, capacity, and connection, there is one more C that is critical to student success.
You have to be creative. You have to be innovative. You have to be different. You have to think about how do we recreate what we've done to make something fresh and new happen? Because we are serving scholars who are innovative. They were born into innovation. They don't even know what we did. They don't think the way we did. They're going to have jobs that have not even been created yet. So we cannot afford to use old tactics on innovative youngsters. Not only that, innovative young people who are working around with us. We have to be brave enough to say, we got to do something different. Because if we're not creative, we're going to lose the first four Cs.
The Summer Summit also featured an awards luncheon, recognizing outstanding students such as the 2023 statewide Belcher Scholarship winner, Sean Tal Ugbayfun of Republic High School. The luncheon was also an opportunity to celebrate board members who have achieved additional levels of board certification beyond the basic state requirement levels and have achieved the designation of advanced, master, or distinguished certified board member. At the conclusion of the summit during the delegate assembly, Ruth Johnson of the Raymore Peculiar School District was sworn in as president of the Missouri School Boards Association after serving as president-elect for the past year. She told board members attending the summit, "It's important to understand the challenges our schools face right now, but it's also important to celebrate accomplishments."
As we look ahead into this next year, we will face many of the same challenges that we've had in recent times. We must, however, look forward, be better, and focus on our why.
MSBA state officers elected during the delegate assembly meeting held at the summit include President-elect Patty Questonberry of the Ozark R6 School District and Vice President Jonathan Russell of the Neosho School District. As the summit concluded, Senator Carla Esslinger delivered a resolution originating from the Senate floor, recognizing the outstanding contributions of outgoing MSBA President Ray Murphy.
Every once in a while, you have an opportunity to recognize leadership and to recognize people's contribution and just the giving nature of time and resource and energy for something that, obviously, you're not paid for, but because it matters to the heart and it matters to the children in his district and across the state. And I want to say thank you so much for your leadership.
MSBA's positions on state and federal education issues are determined by the delegate assembly that will be meeting this coming November. If your school board has a position statement on an issue you would like to submit to the advocacy committee for consideration, you can do so this summer. The advocacy committee reviews those proposals and makes recommendations to the delegate assembly that determines MSBA's positions on issues. Those position statements express to legislators, policymakers, the public, and the media where MSBA stands on issues affecting public schools. Be part of the process by reviewing the current positions, discussing them with your fellow school board members, and proposing changes. Delegates will vote on proposed changes at the Fall Delegate Assembly this November in Kansas City. Registration will be open starting July 10th for the 2023 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials to be held November 2nd through the 4th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature numerous breakout sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, along with a lineup of general session speakers you won't want to miss. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in August for the next MSBA Board Report.
Thank you, Colin. Do any of our cabinet members have updates? I know Tara's don't meet in the summer.
He's met in July, so.
We welcome Julie Voss to the HR Board Advisory. So, welcome.
Thank you. So we will move to 8.02, our student report. Adam?
All right. So I know I missed the June meeting, so I have a couple things just moved over from June with a couple updates in there. But as Ms. Miller said, it's been a pretty quiet summer. So one of the biggest things that a lot of our high school students have been participating in is our A-plus diploma program. So Dr. Zogora kind of went over what it was earlier. It's basically a program where there are certain requirements, the foremost being 50 hours of community service within your, like, community. So a lot of this volunteering is coming from our Dressel enrichment camps. So various camps involving things like art or veterinary science, you know, just all over the place. There's really something for everyone. And then also some volunteering opportunities at our Early Childhood Education Program with their week-to-week activities and field trips. We've had about 70 volunteers this summer, is what I heard the last time. So that's really exciting that all these people are getting this certification and just using the summer as the best, to their best ability. In addition, a lot of our students are participating in summer school. So whether that's for credit recovery or just to get ahead on some of those required credits, things like health or gym. I know a lot of students have shared that, especially with, if you're taking, like, honors or advanced placement classes, it can be hard to kind of try and balance all those full-year classes along with the required classes like PFM or health that sometimes don't exactly fit in with your schedule. And then a quick update about our student board advisory. So I met with Dr. Sparks, Ms. Johnston, and Ms. Hosenfeld back in June to kind of go over some things. So the main thing I want to tell everyone is that there will be a notification a little bit prior to school beginning about who is selected for these boards. There's more information, such as like the expectations, how frequently we're meeting, all that kind of stuff. And I just want to thank everyone who has helped with this process, you know, all the students, teachers, administrators. A special shout out to Bailey Harvett from Ms. Johnston's team. You know, she's just been great. She helped me film a video and all that stuff. And she's just been so supportive throughout this whole process, so I'd like to thank her. Some various updates and recognitions I like to give. Our host a team, which is the Health Occupation Students of America, recently attended the International Leadership Conference in Dallas, Texas. We had three students, I believe, take home top 10 in their event. So that's amazing. That's super exciting. I think there were more than 1,000 students there. And then they also participated in various interactive simulations, such as an anatomage tournament, which is basically like this big table where it's like a full human body. You can look at all these different nerves, blood vessels, like, very in-depth. It's very cool. And then also just leadership seminars and stuff. Our StuCo recently, back in June, participated in the Missouri Association of Student Council Summer Workshop at William Woods University titled Lasso Your Leadership. As the name suggests, it was kind of Western-themed, but that wasn't the main basis. It was stuff like leadership-building exercises, seminars from professionals in their fields, you know, community service projects, fundraising, just all the things that really can make a leader be the best they can be in their local school district. And then also on the topic of leadership, we had some students recently participate in the Rotary Youth Leadership Awards. So it's like, I believe, a four-day kind of program where you basically participate in various service projects. I believe we had one that might actually get implemented by a local Rotary chapter here in St. Louis. It's a 5K where they collect shoes and different stuff, so be on the lookout for that. And then my final update is just that we have our Summer Cafe going on. It's the fifth year of this program. And for anyone who doesn't know what the Summer Cafe is, it's basically a program that works to battle food insecurity by providing lunches throughout the summer for students that otherwise may not have access to a kind of strict lunch and eating schedule like they do during the school year. So yeah, that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. We'll move to 9.0, action items by consent. We have action items by consent 9.01 to 9.09. However, there are no items under 9.05 this month. Does anyone wish to remove any of these items for individual consideration? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve consent items 9.01 to 9.09, noting there are none for 9.05?
So moved.
Motion by Mike. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Andrew. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, I have a question. Dr. McKinney, under one of the contracts, it's IMPER agreement, and there wasn't a lot of documentation about what that was.
Sure. So IMPER stands for the Missouri University Partnership for Educational Renewal. We are a member district. There are members from all over the state. The goal of the consortium is to connect K-12 schools with the Missouri Colleges of Education and Human Development Research Team. They also provide services such as the Senior On-Site Student Teaching Program, which sends students to us from Mizzou. They spend an entire year onsite with us the first semester, and then they do a traditional student teaching experience in the second semester. We also participate in the Mental Health Leadership Academy, which talks about mental health issues that not only impact student achievement, but impact staff as well. We benefit from the teacher preparation and Office of Field Experiences professional development programs. And then finally, we do receive the research materials that they provide us. Lastly, I would say one of the benefits for these fees is our teachers at Limburg School District get a discounted rate on all Missouri University master's degree classes.
Thank you. I just wasn't sure there wasn't a big explanation. It just kind of like listed us and some other school districts that are doing it.
I would also mention that we've been a member of IMPER for quite some time.
I didn't know that. I just didn't know what it was off the top of my head. So, okay. So we have a motion by Mike and a second by Andrew. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. We would also like to thank Color Art for their generous donation of furniture to Sperring Middle School. 10.0, individual action items, we have one. 10.01, architect request for qualifications and selection. Do I have a motion to reject all qualifications submitted in response to the Architectural, Engineering, Design, and Consultant Services Request for Qualifications, RFQ? The RFQ be canceled and that a new RFQ be issued at a later date as determined by administration?
So moved.
Motion by Andrew?
Second.
Second by Kristi. Are there any questions? You have something to say?
Yep, I do have something to say. I just want to say we're asking that this RFQ be canceled and rejected and us move forward with a future one is, to be clear, it's not because we think the qualifications we received are insufficient. Rather, we are still in the beginning stages of selecting additional construction projects that will be assigned to the architect we select and our current architect. And the services are not needed today, you know. And we would rather take our time and consider further and refine the selection process. So we intend to issue another RFQ and invite all those that responded to this RFQ to respond in the next few months. So we'll be back here again in a few months to talk about the same thing.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion by Andrew, a second by Kristi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. 11.01, reports for the record, we have two this evening. There are program evaluations for our Special Education Program and the Gifted Education and Honors Program. Does anyone have any comments or questions? I have a question for Tara, sorry. So I just, the parent survey results that were listed, that was administered by the state, I felt like there wasn't a lot of context given to the answers to know what meant good, what meant bad, things like that. So just going forward, that would be helpful, but I would also kind of like the information, if you could email it. And then for SSDs after the IEP survey, I would kind of like to see a breakdown of how, instead of like, I would like to see the answers to each question, not just the topics, so that we could look at concerns and see, like, are there trends?
The patterns specifically, yep.
Yes. And then I noticed that they developed new goals for the And then I noticed that they developed new goals for the next school year, and it was interesting because I didn't see those goals tied into what were identified as concerns in the, mainly, communication.
And I do know communication is a big, it's one of our compass goals this next year. Part of that may be that a lot of this program evaluation was completed before we got the student data, the survey data. We were waiting on both the state and SSD to provide that. Our concern has been trying not to oversurvey our teachers, I'm sorry, our parents, because there have been these series of things. But there's definitely a room to make those connections.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, we have no eleven point zero two or eleven point zero three items this evening, and we will move to eleven point zero four, Resident Initiated Agenda Items. As a reminder, last month, the board voted to adopt board policies that included BDDH-1, Public Participation at Board Meetings, and KC Community Engagement. Those policies were revised in response to Missouri State Law 162.058, which went into effect last August and created new opportunity during board meetings for residents to place an item on the agenda that replaces item 12.0 Citizen Communication Regarding Non-Agenda Items. District residents will now be able to request that an agenda item be added to a future regularly scheduled board meeting. These items will be listed on the agenda as item 11.04 Resident Initiated Agenda Items. More information on the revised policy is on the district website. As with Citizen Communication Regarding Agenda Items, residents will have three minutes to address the board for Resident Initiated Agenda Items. So 11.00401, Proposal to Amend Board Policy on Public Comment, Reinstiting 12.0 Citizen Communication Regarding Non-Agenda Items While Also Keeping Policy BDDH-1. So this item was requested by Resident Martha Juchild. And Mrs. Juchild, you're welcome to come forward and present. Thank you.
And thank you. Missouri Revised Statute 162.058 provides that each school district shall implement a community engagement policy that provides residents of the school district, methods, plural, of communicating with the school board. In implementing this law, Limburg has treated it as a repeal and replace for public comment on non-agenda items when it should instead be treated as an enhancement to the original 12.0 Agenda Section. Under the old policy, district stakeholders could present the board any information or comments they wanted to share and have that information or those comments shared publicly at the time they chose to share it. With this new policy, stakeholders forfeit this opportunity and instead must first meet with representatives of the district before speaking publicly on non-agenda items at a board meeting. There are many reasons why stakeholders not only don't want to go through this controlled process, but might find themselves at a disadvantage for doing so. Some stakeholder issues are timely and would be ill-served by the new procedures. Other issues are benign enough that the cumbersome process now in place would discourage stakeholders from speaking. For example, if I wanted to publicly compliment the district on its participation in certain arts programs, the place where I would have done it, Citizen Communication Regarding Non-Agenda Items, is no longer available to me, and I would have to determine whether it's a good use of my time to go through the screening process simply to compliment the district in public. Additionally, as I have already gone through this vetting process, I noted that it consumes valuable staff time. As an engaged stakeholder, I want to have the freedom to choose when I believe my concerns or comments merit attention on the agenda and when those concerns or comments require nothing more than for me to approach the podium at the meeting. I choose and deliver my remarks. Please reinstate 12.0 Citizen Communication Regarding Non-Agenda Items to complement 11.04 Resident Initiated Agenda Items to allow for a more efficient, timely, and fair public comment process. Also, please consider increasing the time for comments made under 11.04 to five minutes instead of three. And I welcome any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Juchild. I appreciate you coming and sharing with us. So Limburg Schools Board and our administration remain committed to encouraging transparent and open engagement with our community. And across the state, Missouri Public School Districts are implementing this change in response to the state law, which requires all Missouri Public Schools to include a process in their policies to allow residents of a school district to have an item on the agenda at a board meeting. And this law was passed with the intent of improving community engagement in districts that do not allow public comment on non-agenda items. So Limburg already provides an opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items, as you mentioned, and this new policy continues that practice and aligns our procedure with the new state law. We will continue to encourage and allow for patrons to speak publicly about concerns and issues. We will now move to 12.0 Recess, which we have already conducted our executive session, and there is no need, so we will move to 14.0 Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Meeting 1579?
So moved.
Motion by Andrew?
Second.
Second by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Board Meeting 1579 is adjourned.